Okay, I'll just check in with our colleague online. George, you ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. And Kevin, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'll go ahead and call to order our Board of County Commissioners' land use meeting and public hearing for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of the agenda today?
Yes, sir, you do. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda. Where appropriate, posting has been made, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over all matters.
Great, thank you. And do any commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay, and I don't either. With that, we'll jump right into Item 2, our land use meeting agenda items. The first is Item 2A, Sterling Ranch Filing 7A, Approval Extension, Project File XT-2025-003. Brett Thomas, Chief Planner, presenting for staff. Hi, Brett.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brett Thomas for Plan Services. Request included as part of this presentation is an approval extension for Sterling Ranch Filing 7A. The owner is Sterling Ranch LLC. The applicant requests a one-year extension to the approval of Sterling Ranch Filing 7A until June 11th, 2026. As depicted on this map, the site is located within the Sterling Ranch Development, north of Waterton Road, east of Roxborough Park Road, and south of the Piesco Transmission Lines. The subdivision resolution allows the director to grant a time extension for plat recordation of up to one year upon a written request by the applicant for good cause being shown. Further extensions may be granted by the Board of County Commissioners at a public meeting upon written request by the applicant. In this case, the director granted a one-year extension for Sterling Ranch Filing 7A through June 11th, 2025. Based on the standards for an extension of plat recordation, recordation extension to June 11th, 2026, for Sterling Ranch Filing 7A, subject to the 12 original conditions of approval, may be approved by the board. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to take questions at this time if the board wishes. Otherwise, the applicant's available to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Brett. Any questions for staff before the applicant presents?
No, sir.
No, sir, no questions.
Okay, I don't have any either. With that, we'll call up the applicant to make their presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Layden, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Jock. I am the Director of Entitlements and Engineering for Sterling Ranch Development Company, 8155 Ponie River Avenue, Suite 200, Sterling Ranch, Colorado, 80125. We have no presentation at this time. I'm just intending to be able to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time and for staff's time coordinating this request.
Great. Anything else, Mr. Jock?
Well, I just sat down there.
Yep.
No, that is all we have.
That's everything, okay. And then congratulations on your recent promotion.
Thank you.
Great. Any questions for the applicant?
No.
George, any questions for the applicant?
No, it's a simple extension. I've got no questions.
Okay, and neither do I. With that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve Sterling Ranch Filing 7A, to approve the extension, project file XT-2025-003.
Great, so we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. With that, we'll move on to Item 2, which is here exemption, First Amendment exemption, project file EX-2025-001. Eric Pavlenek, Principal Planner, presenting for staff. Hi, Eric.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Eric Pavlenek, representing Planning Services. Before you is the higher exemption, First Amendment. The project number is EX-2025-001. Kevin Archer with David E. Archer &amp; Associates is here as the applicant's representative. Lonnie Clifford and Doug Paulson are the property owners. The request is for approval of an exemption amendment to legalize two parcels on 18.31 acres. The parcels were established by deed in 2007 instead of coming through the county's subdivision process. The intent of the exemption process is to establish a review process for divisions of land that the board determines are outside of the purpose of subdivision. The exemption process includes the middle of an application, followed by a limited refruency review period. No courtesy notice is required for this type of exemption application. The project area is located in Sedalia, southwest of the intersection of North US Highway 85 and State Highway 67. The proposed exemption amendment is within the Sedalia rural community as identified in Section 4 of the Comprehensive Master Plan. The parcels are zoned rural residential, as shown in red. This is a narrow view of the two parcels. Parcel A was established in 2000 as part of a two-lot subdivision exemption called the higher exemption approved by the board. Parcel B of that exemption was subsequently developed as the Sedalia United States Post Office. The current amendment request is to legalize a split of parcel A into two parcels, which occurred in 2007. This exemption exhibit shows the proposed boundaries of the two parcels to be legalized through this amendment, parcel A1 and parcel A2. Parcel A1 has provided access by an existing access easement through an adjacent Meaton Balts parcel that connects to Huxtable Street. Parcel A2 has direct access to Douglas Avenue. There are no formal approval standards for exemption requests. Rather, there are a set of eligibility criteria. In this case, the board may consider the request to be eligible based on Section 903.05, which is noted on the slide. In addition, staff has verified that each lot has legal and physical access and could obtain well and septic permits. Both lots are subject to the U.S. setbacks and height standards of the Rural Residential Zone District. Staff has evaluated the request in accordance with Article 9 of the subdivision resolution. Should the board find that the eligibility criteria and other provisions of Article 9 have been met, the following proposed conditions should be included in the motion. Condition number one, prior to recordation of the exemption exhibit, the technical corrections to the exhibit should be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County -- or, sorry, yes. And condition number two, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's commitments, satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 904.04 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters for the board's action on the exemption request, which is noted on the slide. This concludes my presentation. I'll unveil for any questions. Otherwise, Kevin Archer has a PowerPoint presentation.
Great, thank you, Eric. Any questions for staff?
No, sir.
No questions.
Okay, I don't have any either. We'll invite the applicant to come up and make a presentation. And before you get started, if you want to just state your name and where you're from, and then if you're okay with all of the conditions as presented.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Archer with Dave Archer &amp; Associates, 105 Wilcox, Castle Rock, Colorado. As Eric mentioned, Lonnie Clifford is here with us today. Doug Paulson is attending a graduation ceremony for his granddaughter, so he's not able to make it today.
Please tell him we said congratulations.
We will, thanks. Oh, there it goes. Oh, did you do that? Okay. Just to kind of expand a little bit on the history of the property. The -- sorry. Archie and Louise Hire originally purchased the property. Got to go the other way. In 1974, and it was used for agriculture and whatnot through that period of time. In 2000, as Eric mentioned, there was a higher exemption was created, and created parcels A and B. One of the parcels was for the post office. The other parcel remained with the Hires. In 2003, the higher parcel was transferred to Louise Hire Trust under a quitclaim deed, and the other half was transferred to George and Joyce Hire, their son. In December of 2006, the deed was created for 2.36 acres, and that was transferred, stayed with Louise Hire Trust. And the remaining 15 acres was transferred to Ice Tongue Land and Cattle Company, which is Doug Paulson. Ms. Hire retained parcel A1 as it was directly adjacent to her home at the time. On October 19th, Louise passed away, and parcel A1 was transferred from Louise to the Tony L. Clifford under a quitclaim deed. Lonnie's children were fortunate to use the property for forage projects and other activities through the time. And basically, the land has been more than just a piece of property to them over the years and played a significant role in their family history. And thanks for your time and consideration in the project, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great. And you said you're okay with all of the conditions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Let me open it up to the board for any questions of the applicant.
No questions from me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Teal?
So just to confirm with the applicant, this is really just a cleanup, a legal cleanup of where the property lines have -- and property line ownership has gone to.
Yes.
No further questions.
Okay, thank you, George. And I don't have any further questions. With that, I'll open it up to any citizen comment either in the room or online. Is there any citizen comment?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, not seeing any in the room either. I will close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair, if I could --
Mr. Chair, please.
No, please, go ahead.
Well, if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve higher exemption, First Amendment, because it does meet all the grounds and criteria with two conditions as presented. It's exemption project file EX-2025-001.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to Item 2C, which is Inverness Filing 7, First Amendment Lot 1, First Revision, Alternative Park Land Dedication Request for a Site Improvement Plan, project file Mike Pasika presenting for staff. Hi, Mike.
Thank you, Chairman Layden. Mike Pasika representing staff. And the request before you is the Inverness Filing 7, First Amendment Lot 1, First Revision, Alternate Park Land Dedication Request for an Associated and Multifamily Development, project number SP-2024-069. Holland Acquisition Company, LLC, has submitted a site improvement plan currently under review for development of a 10-acre lot in the Inverness Business Park on property zone plan development. The SIP will establish 325 apartment units. The applicant is requesting approval of an alternative park land dedication standard as set forth in Article 10, Dedication Standards of the Douglas County Subdivision Resolution for Multifamily Development Proposals. The intent of Article 10 is to provide a minimum standard for the required land dedication pursuant to Section 3028, 133, 4A of the Colorado Revised Statutes. Section 100301 of the subdivision resolution states that the board may consider alternative park land dedication formulas for multifamily development proposals. The formula to calculate the minimum amount of land dedication required for residential development is shown on this slide. The board reserves the right to adjust the acreage requirement between local and regional park categories as deemed necessary to meet specific needs and to determine the amount of developed park acreage required. The board may also consider alternative park land dedication formulas for multifamily development proposals. Run through a couple of maps. Looking at a vicinity map here, and the site is in the far north area of the county. The site is located approximately 1,500 feet east of I-25, a half mile west of Centennial Airport, and 1,000 feet south of County Line Road, shown with the red star on this map. And the site here is outlined in red. The development will be located on the site of the former Colorado Athletic Club, shown here with the old facilities. This slide outlines the required cash and lieu fees for the 325-unit apartment project. Using the land appraisal valuation of $750,000 per acre, the total cash and lieu fee required for this would be $10,968,750. The applicant asserts that the average household size will be below the county's three residents per unit. They anticipate an average household size of 1.64 residents per unit. Based on a lower per-unit population, the applicant is proposing a land dedication of 7.995 acres, which equates to $5,996,250 cash and lieu equivalent. They also requesting a credit for $4,438,058 for private recomanities and a credit for $242,215 in storm sewer improvements, resulting in a proposed park cash and lieu contribution of $1,371,795. In the past, the county applies a lesser standard for multifamily developments, resulting in reductions in required land dedication for such projects. The applicant asserts that there will be adequate park facilities to meet the needs of future residents, with the construction of a private clubhouse and pool for future tenants, and existing and planned parks and recreational amenities within this area of the county. This is a page from the site improvement plan currently under review, and highlighted in red are a private pool and a clubhouse that will be built down here on the east portion of the site, and a trail connection to an existing trail that will connect over here to John Derry Park. At the time of the original subdivision for the business park, 3% of the gross site was dedicated for park use. Based on the acreage of this project, a 0.3-acre credit should be considered. At the appraised value of $750,000 per acre, this would result in an additional credit of $225,000. Staff has evaluated the request in accordance with Article 10 of the subdivision resolution. The applicant has requested an alternative park dedication requirement to reduce required park cash and lieu fees. The board may choose to approve an alternate park demand standard based on the justifications provided by the applicant. Park standards are in place to ensure that adequate local and regional parks will be available for the county's increasing population. Should the board find the alternative park land dedication to be acceptable, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in the motion. Condition number one, the final land dedication amount shall include a 0.3-acre credit for the park land dedication provided at the time of original subdivision. Condition number two, cash and lieu of park land dedication fees in the amount of $1,371,975 less the 0.3-acre credit shall be paid to Douglas County prior to final approval of the site improvement plan. Condition number three, private recreational amenities proposed on the site improvement plan shall be identified and secured in the associated site improvement plan improvements agreement. And condition number four, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the request. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. And this concludes my presentation. The applicant is here, and they do have a short presentation this afternoon.
Thanks, Mike. You know, in reviewing the packet, I was having a hard time finding the legal approval criteria. Is that in here?
There aren't specific approval criteria. It's really at your discretion, this decision.
100% Board of County Commissioner discretion with no guardrails. Is that true? Okay, interesting. Well, and I think based upon what I'm understanding, it's really a reduction in the number of individuals per dwelling unit that would allow for the credit, and that would be converted into recreational amenities on site. Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So the values we're looking at here, and there's full market value, there's fair market value. Are we looking at this land from a county perspective? When we're calculating, when those calculations were put on the screen earlier, is that valuing the land as multifamily land or as parkland?
As multifamily.
Okay.
Yep.
In full market value, fair market value, how is that --
I believe it's full market value.
Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
In the determination of the full market value, using full market value instead of fair market value, is that a -- how is that determined? Is that by state law? Is that statute, statutory?
The statute says fair market value, which is what our appraiser actually -- we have an appraisal consultant that reviews the appraisals submitted by private applicants, and they're considering fair market value when they're looking at that. There isn't -- I can't tell you what the technical distinction is, but it's a very similar value. It's basically what's the value of the property in kind of a post-platted condition with improvements in place, and they use comparables to arrive at that value. So we've done a number of these appraisals over the last couple of years, and this one came in at $750,000. So you're appraising it based upon improvement for a specific use, not for parkland. So as you recall too, I just want to give us a little bit of background. We, in a work session, had talked with the board about making some changes to Article 10, and some of that is bringing our standards in line with what other jurisdictions in the front range, other counties municipalities are doing, because we use the 15 acres per thousand population, where I think we're going to be proposing more like eight per thousand population. And then a lot of jurisdictions also do provide for that, that lesser standard for multifamily dwellings based on the lower household size. And then it's really going to be up to the board to determine how much credit you want to give for private improvements. We'll be presenting that to you. But in running through some scenarios and some of the changes we may bring forward to you, some of this request and some that are going to come forward to you are pretty in line with what we've discussed in terms of our regulatory changes, if that gives you some comfort. But obviously, that's something that you're going to look at in more detail when you look at red lines and give us direction as to whether you want to put that out on referral.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jeanette. Commissioner, Mr. Ben Winkle, any additional questions? No?
Thank you very much.
No, okay. Commissioner Teal, any additional questions?
No, I appreciate your questions that you two had.
Okay. And I have no questions either. I think with that, we'll invite up the applicant.
While we get that pulled up. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Kelly Dranginiss with Holland Partner Group, also known as Holland Acquisition Co. Our business address locally is 600 South Cherry Street, Suite 700 in Glendale. Here we are. All right, who is Holland Partner Group? Holland Partner Group is a fully integrated real estate investment firm focused on building communities in the Western United States. We were founded in 2001 by Clyde Holland and have done a wide range of development from downtown and urban communities to more suburban contexts such as this one. We focus on delivering high-quality Class A residential communities in desirable areas close to employment, transit, and recreational activities. We have extensive experience working in Colorado, having developed over 3,500 units in the MSA. Our fully integrated company includes development, construction, and property management under one umbrella, so Holland stays involved from the inception of a project all the way through management, once the community is leased up. A little bit of background on the site. So it is the former Colorado Athletic Club. That Athletic Club closed in August of 2003 due to the declining membership and activity at the building. Since then, it's actually been used as a K-9 training facility for the Douglas County Police Department. We've been in long-term discussions, having been working on this site for over two years at this point, to bring the property back up to be active in contributing use to the community. We've completed rezoning in March of 2024 with you all here, and have spent the last year progressing the drawings to 100% construction documentations. We submitted our fourth site improvement plan to the Planning Department last Friday, April 4th, and we're planning to start construction this summer if all goes according to plan. So fee reduction request. Up on screen, I have the math behind our reduction request, which I'll take you through here in a moment. But in some important background for this is we're finally starting to see interest from capital partners after several years of difficult market conditions and no response due to -- from the capital markets. It's been difficult to move this project forward to our current status, but we're pleased to be here today, ready to submit building permit hopefully later this week. Beyond capital markets, uncertainty surrounding this fee, as well as uncertainty surrounding tariffs are two large objections to the project at this point. And while I don't think we're going to solve tariffs in the room today, I do hope we can solve our permit, our park fee, rather. Due to IPAC, which is the Inverness Architectural Control Committee, in essence, we're providing beyond typical landscaping along the public right-of-way, multiple connections to the existing John Derry Park. We've added a second connection, which you'll see in the packet that we submitted on Friday, as well as elevated design throughout the project. All of these elements are costly, but will also improve the project with respect to the park interaction and neighborhood aesthetics. So the math. 10 acres is the size of our current site. That's, we're proposing 325 units. With a requirement of .045 acres per unit, that would require 14.6 acres of land dedicated to build our current community with a park requirement. This would leave me with negative four acres to build my 325-unit community. With the appraisal coming back at $750,000 per acre, that park fee is $11 million. In comparison with that appraisal, the land seller would need to pay me $3.5 million to take the land from them to build the community. So when we look at some neighboring jurisdictions, Douglas County land dedication is based on three people per household, as previously mentioned. Arapahoe County and Lakewood require 1.76 and 1.5 individuals per unit, respectively. Holland Partner Group's actual -- Holland Partner Group's actual average is 1.67 in the buildings we operate across Colorado. This would bring, the average of those three is 1.64 individuals per unit. So, if we apply that to our site here, we would have 7.995 adjusted dedicated acreage, and that adjusted in Lufy would be just shy of $6 million. Further, we discuss the cost of the onsite amenities. We'll provide amenity building, our amenity building, including clubroom, leasing center, and a large fitness facility. Outdoors will have a pool, spa, barbecues, as well as courtyard space for our residents. These amenities will reduce the requirement and the burden on Douglas County parks. Therefore, we request that the cost of those onsite amenities be counted against our adjusted fee in lieu. So, the 4.4 million for our amenities, and then the 242,000 for the infrastructure improvements reduce the fee to the 1.37 million you see up on screen and in the packet. So, with that, thank you for your time, and appreciate any questions or comments you all have for me.
Thank you for that. Can you go back to that rendering, that visual rendering, and like maybe the third or fourth slide? Yeah, thanks.
So, these are examples of communities that we've built across Colorado.
Okay, and this one would be substantially similar?
Yes, so we have a combination of three and four-story buildings. So, I think the tensing in, oh, there is, is a, ha, figured it out. Similar to tensing there, we also have quite a bit of stone, but that's overall kind of more massing similarity to what we're proposing here.
Okay, great. Any questions for the applicant? None on the dais online? George, any questions?
Negative.
Okay. I don't have any questions either. With that, I will open it up to the public for any questions or citizen comment. Any citizen comment in the room or online?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So, with that, I'll bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve Inverness File Number 7, First Amendment, Lot 1, First Revision, Alternative Parkland Dedication Request for a Site Improvement Plan, because it does meet all the approved criteria with four conditions as presented. Project File SP 2024-069.
Thank you for that motion, and before I get a second, I want to confirm that I heard from the applicant, you're okay with the conditions?
Yes, we're okay with the conditions.
Okay, thank you. So, we've got a first on the floor. Is there a second?
You know, colleagues, when, when I hear from residents of Douglas County who complain about growth, I, you know, we'll hear from them around different parts of the county, the place I never hear anyone complain about growth is here in the Inverness area. And what I do hear come out of the Inverness area is a desire for more affordable housing. And so, I am absolutely seconding this one, because I think this is the right thing, the right idea at the right place. And I do think anything we can do to encourage residential growth in this area that has in the past been almost strictly commercial, I think we should. I think it's a good tie-in to the downtown Denver, and certainly the tech center business community, and for that reason, I second.
Okay, thank you, George. So, we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? I would tend to agree that, especially when it comes to parkland dedication, I really like the work of the private sector and the comments from staff around exploring ways in which we can think about this in an alternative manner. I mean, certainly, you know your demographic better than we do, and the ways in which they recreate, I think would be reflected in this alternative parkland dedication. So, I certainly appreciate that, and I would agree with my colleague that we need more workforce housing to meet the demand in that corridor, so I think this fits really well. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, our final item is in our public hearing agenda items. Item 3A is the Rokio-Luli Exemption, and you'll have to correct me if my pronunciation is off. Parcel 2, Eighth Amendment, Used by Special Review. Project File US 2024-010. Eric Pavlenek, Principal Planner, presenting for staff. Hello again.
Eric Pavlenek again, representing Planning Services. The project before you is a Used by Special Review Amendment for Hope Media Group for the height extension of an existing telecommunications facility. The project number is US 2024-010. Hope Media Group is the applicant, and Rachel Bruin with the Durna Group is the applicant representative. Both the applicant and applicant representative are attending this afternoon virtually. The request is for approval of a USR amendment to extend the height of an existing telecommunications facility tower by 65 feet for a total height of 150 feet. The proposal will remove and replace FM radio antennas and mounting equipment on the existing tower. According to the applicant, the increase in height is needed to fully serve their network and provide adequate coverage. The intent of the USR process is to provide for uses in specific zone districts that shall require a public notice and hearing and the approval of the Board of County Commissioners subject to such conditions and safeguards as may be imposed by the board. The USR process begins with the submission of an application, following a review period by referral agencies and the public. There are public hearings before the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. Courtesy notices are sent out to adjacent property owners during the review process. Public comments were received from property owners, or from three property owners within the area. In general, comments focused on potential impacts on the rural character and landscape, health risks, and property values, along with the expectation that the height of the structure would not be increased. The applicant did provide a written response to public comments, which was included as an attachment in the staff report. The Planning Commission heard the request last night at the Planning Commission hearing and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. No public testimony was provided. The site indicated by the red star is generally located southwest of Sedalia and north of North State Highway 67. More specifically, the property is approximately a half-mile east of the entrance to the Pike National Forest. The site is located within the Pike National Forest and Foothill subarea of the non-urban area of the CMP. The 52-acre site is located in the Agriculture 1 or A1 Zone District, as shown on this map. This is an aerial view of the parcel showing existing conditions. The telecommunications facility is shown in blue, kind of on that northwest portion of the site. The facility was originally approved by the board as a USR in 1984 for a telecommunications facility. The original USR terminated and was subsequently approved for similar uses in 1994. Several administrative amendments have been submitted and approved from 2000 to about 2014. The Douglas County Sheriff's Office has radio equipment, antennas, and microwave dishes mounted to this tower, which were approved through the location extent process in 2014. This is the site plan exhibit showing the kind of overall layout of the site. Once again, the improvements are kind of in that north, oh, sorry, northwest portion of the property here. The tower is owned by American Tower, and is currently houses a combination of public and private telecommunications equipment. Access to the tower is from an existent gravel access drive from State Highway 67. This slide depicts the existing and proposed north elevation views of the facility. The tower extension will be 3 feet 6 inches wide, and will be of a lattice design. The tower extension, antennas, and equipment will be painted to match existing improvements. The applicant also had to provide a visual impact assessment and photosim showing existing and proposed conditions. The study and photosims were included as an attachment to the staff report. This slide depicts one of the photosims provided from the applicant. The tower itself will be visible. However, the applicant notes that the open nature of the lattice tower design helps reduce its visibility at longer distances. Following are some site photos. This is a view looking west at the existing structure. And here's another view looking northeast. As you can see, the property has some steep grades throughout. And then finally, looking back west from the gravel access road, which provides access to the facility. In addition to the site plan layout, the USR regulations require the various operational details, limitations be set forth on the plan exhibit. The elements of the management plan are shown on Sheet 2 of the exhibit, some of which are outlined. The tower is unmanned and doesn't require any permanent onsite staff. Routine maintenance of the facility is expected every 30 to 45 days. Here are the approval standards for the USR, which are discussed in detail within the staff report. Telecommunication facilities are also subject to the approval criteria noted on this slide. These seven approval standards are discussed in detail within the staff report. The applicant also provided a written response to this criteria. Staff has assessed the application according to Section 21 of the zoning resolution. Should the board find that the approval standards for the use by special review are met, staff proposes the following conditions for inclusion in the motion. Condition number one, prior to final approval of the record copy of the USR plan exhibit, any necessary technical changes shall be made to satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number two, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 2109.09 of the zoning resolution sets forth the parameters for the board's decision on USR applications, which is noted on the slide. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Otherwise, Rachel Bruin with the Durna Group has a brief overview of the project.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't have any questions either, I guess, at this time. I did have a few questions from a citizen comment. I think I'll ask those following the presentation from the applicant, unless, it sounds like there isn't any presentation, but just there to answer questions? Or is there? Do they have some comments?
We do have, we have a PDF slideshow.
Okay.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I did have one quick question. Could you go to the slide about the conditions as presented?
Yes.
Total of two?
Yes.
Those two, okay. I thought there might be an additional slide, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon. This is Rachel Bruin. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, Ms. Bruin, please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric, for the presentation. Again, my name is Rachel Bruin, and I am the applicant representative for Hope Media Group, as well as the tower owner, American Tower Corporation. Hope Media Group is the nonprofit Federal Communications Commission licensee of the radio station KXWA, operating on 101.9. Hope Media Group purchased KXWA in 2022, and since then has provided Christian adult contemporary music and meaningful talk programming on the non-commercial FM station to serve the residents of its official community of license, Centennial, as well as to serve dozens of other communities in the Basin and Foothills, including Sedalia and Castle Rock. Soon after the station purchase, however, Hope Media Group determined that another antenna on this tower is distorting the licensed KXWA signal pattern, thereby preventing the station from fully serving the people in its licensed service area. After many consultations with engineers, it was determined that the best way to correct the technical issue would be to raise the tower height to allow the two antennas to be placed further apart from each other. This necessitates raising the tower to a total height of 150 feet. I wanted to address the comments that we did receive during the public comment timeframe from the residents. A few of those concerns specifically were lighting and radiation. Hope Media Group assures residents that there will be no nuisance lighting, and that any radio frequency radiation exposure, to the extent that there would be any at all, will actually be lessened, not increased, by the proposed alteration. The Federal Aviation Administration, which is the FAA, has approved the tower modification proposal and determined that the tower's location and proposed height do not require that the tower have any installed lighting, and certainly not 24/7 flashing lights. In addition, the tower height increase will move the KXWA antenna further from the ground level, and will allow KXWA to operate with a lower power level from the same service to the public, resulting in lower emissions. Another concern that was brought to our attention from the neighbors is that there may have been an agreement that was previously made by an applicant to not increase the tower height. We did look into this with the tower owner, American Tower, and found no record of that previous commitment. And if there was such a statement made by a previous applicant, it would not have been specific to this project or this carrier, which is Hope Media. I also want to say that in the staff report, we did provide the compliance with the DCZR and the CMP standards. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions for the applicant?
No, sir. Not for me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Teal?
None from me.
None from you. Okay, so I did have a couple of questions, Ms. Bruin, and, you know, I'm looking specifically at a few of the comments we received from the public. One of the questions, or at least one of the comments made by an individual that wrote in is an assertion that there was a departure from previous agreements. And the quote is that, "When the last amendment for this tower was approved, the applicant specifically assured the county and neighbors that an increase in tower height would not be pursued." Is that true?
Not to my knowledge, and again, not to the knowledge of the tower owner, which is American Tower Corporation.
Okay, and I'll direct that to staff. Is that anything that we're aware of?
Jeanette, bear for staff. We are not aware of that. It's not reflected on the management plan or the site plans that we have. I can't really vouch for maybe something that was said in the hearing, but it's not a condition of approval or anything that's on the plan of record.
You know, the other issues that were raised by this individual would be the impact on property values, and the comment is that a presence of a large industrial tower would undoubtedly diminish property values. I don't know, any response to that, Ms. Bruin?
Just in the history of these towers, and, you know, seeing modifications done to these towers, I have not seen that it affects property values.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, most of these questions, I think, you know, relate to, you know, the extension of the service being provided. I don't anticipate that there, I'm looking at the visual rendering here, obviously taller, but relatively transparent. I'm not sure exactly how this would impact the health, safety, welfare of neighboring citizens, or impact property values, but wanted to raise that as a concern from the, from citizens. Any additional questions or comments from the board?
Not for me, no.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, with that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Yes, sir? And if you want to just state your name and where you're from.
I am George Ackerman. I live- I live at 2389 North State Highway 67, which, when you drive through our front meadow, that is what we see without the extension. Our concerns are several in talking to all our neighbors from Elephant Rock Road through where we live on a bend. That was not there when our property was bought in 1920. It's been in our family since that long. Our concerns are, at this point, lights which you have addressed, because another 65 feet up, we see it when we drive through our front meadow. I can't see it from where our house is situated, but my brother-in-law, if they put any lights on that, that's going to be flashing in his windows. He actually owns the property that is leased to American Tower, so he can't be part of this for whatever legal reasons there are. And in talking to my neighbors up Elephant Rock Road, some of them, if any lights go on there, we all try to move away from the city. We're going to wind up with lights. I understand the law enforcement is up there. I'm retired law enforcement, understand. And there were times on my calls, I had no communication. So anything that increases their communication, great. Don't mind that at all. But our main concern is the extension and the lights. And I hike up to that tower four or five times a week, just because I'm in my 80s and it's a good hike. We just want to make sure that if, I have a feeling that the extension will be approved. One of the problems we have is, I can't listen to radio in my garage where my workshop is because of the bleed over from, it just blocks out everything else. I can live with that. I don't, I don't know how my neighbors feel about that, but they have to put a filter of some kind so that we can at least use our AM and FM, you know, radios at the house. I don't think there is one right now. I just kind of ignore it and don't listen to radio when I'm in my garage at my workstation. And I'm glad to see that they're not, it's only going to be three feet wide, the extension going up? Okay. That tower is also used by a redtail, by the way, that sits up there and hunts. Just one of my personal observations, because I see him up there all the time. But the main thing is the tower lights. And we can have something that says they can never go beyond where it forces them to put lights on that, because that's going to ruin the ambiance of the whole area. And as I say, those are my main concerns.
And sir, your time has expired, so thank you very much for sharing that with us. Let me ask for any additional citizen comment, either in the room or online.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion. You know, I, maybe before we do that, Ms. Bruin, if you're still online, did you want to respond to the citizen comment?
Thank you very much, sir, for coming in today. I appreciate it. As we had mentioned earlier, the Federal Aviation did approve the tower modification and determined that the tower's location and proposed height do not require that lighting installed, so that should address that concern for you. As far as the bird that you're saying nests on there, we do have protocol if there are birds in the area that nest on these towers, so that is something that we take into consideration as well. And then to address your other concern regarding if the tower may ever be raised again, unfortunately, I can't speak to that. If another applicant chooses to go through the process of applying for a tower extension, they are able to do that at this time. This is just for Hope Media's, their extension and their equipment.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bruin. So did you say that there would not be lights visible at night, or there would be?
There would not be.
There would not be lights visible at night? Okay, well, I think that's a good response. And then the other question I had was about, that's kind of surprising to me that the citizen would not be able to hear AM or FM radio because of blockage. Is that true?
I'm not aware of that, so we would maybe have to look into that further.
Well, that's an important consideration, I would think, for any neighbor. Limiting their ability to access radio from other sources is significant. Do we have any sense of that from staff?
I don't know that the FCC is supposed to look at these, you know, requests and determine if there's interference, but I don't know, for somebody that's living very close to the tower, could it interfere with their ability to listen to the radio? I've never heard that before, I just don't know.
Yeah, I've never heard of that either, and I'm not a radio or IT expert, so I might look to somebody smarter than I. That's an important assertion. So, Ms. Bruin, do you have any additional information for us on that?
I do not at this time.
I'd like to comment, please.
Sir, if you want to state who you are and who you're with, please.
Yes, my name is Stephen Thompson. I'm with Hope Media Group. I'm the SVP of Engineering and IT. Been doing this for about 40 years, and I would love to at least give information pertinent to the topic at hand.
Great, I think we'd appreciate that. Please go ahead.
Certainly. What the gentleman is referring to is called blanketing interference. It's where another RF signal, radio frequency signal, is so strong that it prevents you from receiving a desirable frequency. We adhere to rules by the FCC to prevent that, and you can file, if you have what's called blanketing interference, then you can file that with the FCC as a complaint, and they will address it with us in a legal format. As far as we are concerned, we are the lower-powered of the two big stations on there. We're not even half the power of the other one that's there, and so there would be some research required to see if there is indeed blanketing interference, and if so, which of the two stations. If there is, it's more likely the larger of the two stations on the tower. So there are legal ways to resolve that through the FCC's procedures.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I appreciate your background and expertise. So is it your sense, then, that Hope Media is engaging in any blanketing interference, or you don't know at this time?
I would say that we are not, but we are always open to comment and research. We do our very, very best to resolve any and all, in fact, we're required by law to resolve any and all interference complaints. So I would welcome the gentleman to please follow with the FCC, and we'd be happy to go through the procedure. I don't think that it's likely, but I also know that there are unique circumstances that we can't rule out, and so I think the best approach would be to go through the methodology required by the FCC. I will say this, if we're causing blanketing interference, and I want to make sure that we hear that if, it's going to be less because we're going further off the ground and we're turning our power down. So we're reducing radiated power and we're increasing height, so that would naturally diminish any interference that we potentially might be causing.
That's really helpful, and certainly not anything that I'm familiar with. So you're saying through approval of this application, it would actually reduce any potential blanket interference?
Correct. And again, that's if there's any going on. The other thing I'd like to address, and it's only by means of education to educate this committee and all who are present, the FAA does not require tower lights at all unless you exceed 199 feet. So 200 feet and above, towers have to have markings or lightings or certain colors of paint, but at this height, there is zero tower lighting required. And the FAA actually put that in writing in a document that's in this request.
Just thank you for that. And I do sit on the Centennial Airport Authority and saw that they did not have a serious objection to this application. With that, let me ask if the board has any additional questions or comments for the applicant.
Oh, I do, Mr. Chair, and it's one that's kind of, I've been pondering, and I think it's just a point of clarification. So the FAA doesn't require lighting, and there are no plans to provide lighting, even though there's not a requirement, correct?
Correct. That tower will not be lit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional questions? Okay.
Additional questions?
Okay. And then last call for any citizen comment. I don't think there's any in the room or online, Troy.
No online comment, sir.
Okay, so I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair, if it please the board, I do have a motion to approve the Rokio Luli exemption, parcel 2, Eighth Amendment, used by special review, because it does meet all the approval criteria with, I might need a reminder here, I believe I saw two conditions as presented, Project File US 2024-00.
Two is correct, George, and I believe the applicant indicated that they were okay with the two conditions, but let me just confirm on the record.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. So we've got a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. That is all of our business for today's land use meeting and public hearing. The next land use meeting and public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 22, 2025, at 2:30 PM. We are adjourned.